Good morning. I'd like to open the Board of Selectmen meeting of Monday, August 15, 2016. It is now 8:00 PM. First order of business.
AM.
AM, excuse me. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to ask Selectman McKelney, the leaders, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Garrett. You seem to be rushing the day along. Okay, second item, public forum, limited to three minutes on any agenda item. Anybody wishing to address the board on any agenda item? Seeing none. Item three, approval of the minutes, would be the minutes of August 1, 2015, which was a regular meeting. Need a motion, please.
Show me your approval.
Second. Second it. Any additions or corrections? Okay, seeing none. I'll call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Item three, ah, excuse me, four, Friends of Lake Quantapug, Joan Steppak, one. Four dot one, receive report on positive impact of the recent herbicide treatment. Joan, good morning, welcome.
I'm Joan Morepeople.
Okay. Please introduce those with you.
This is Pat, Pat Taylor, and Friends of Lake Quantapug.
You have somebody else?
Karen Strawson, who I know you're familiar with. First of all, I'm, we're here today basically to thank you guys for pursuing our request to get rid of some of the invasive weeds at Lake Quantapug, and we're really happy with the results of the herbicides and for trying out those bantik barriers at the beach area. I spoke into many, many people about it, different fishermen who come in from the north end of the lake, come down, and, you know, I'll go down to my dock specifically, say, or just from my deck and say, what do you think about it? And they're just saying what a big difference that they, they see, that one of the people who live up right across from Choate School there said, he has a nice pontoon boat and an older couple, and they use that pontoon boat every day. They were not even able to get it out before. So, anyway, it's just been a real pleasure. We've got some accumulation in some other areas from them, but that's, we're not here to complain about that. But we're, no, they did, a lot of them died, and, you know, but everybody's been working to pick them up. We're here because we'd still like to have some more areas treated, and we know the budget process is starting up again, and we, as Friends of Lake Quantapug, want to make sure that you keep a line item in the park and rec budget for, you know, we had come up with a figure of $50,000 until we get the lake underway. And in that vein, we'd like to also help in developing a five-year, I can give you a copy of this, Joan, if you need it.
Okay.
Developing a five-year maintenance plan in conjunction with Park and Recreation Department, Greg Bugley from the Connecticut Agricultural Experimental Station, who has been a wonderful help, and has always answers calls, when he returns calls, and with us. We want to work together, not just separate, you know? We'd like to help build a roadmap toward the, toward a future plan, and collectively, we'd like to have our ideas become part of this and sit down, you know, as a workable committee with the town representatives and everybody else. And then the other thing I was wondering is, is it possible that we could have a subcommittee from our group that focused solely on the lake, maintenance and issues affecting the lake? We've been told by the Park and Recreation Department that we can't be part of their committee, that you had them appoint because of the town charter, but I don't know if there's anything that, if there's a way that there could be a subcommittee of that committee so we could be involved in it continually, because the only way we really could be involved in it is if we became, you know, a member of the Park and Recreation Commission, you know, and were appointed as part of the committee. So that's one of the things that we would really like to get involved in and focus on. And the other thing that we would like to ask, if you could appoint someone, it doesn't have to be right now, because it's, time is getting close, but to appoint someone like you did last time, or a couple of people to apply for some grants from the Guilford Foundation. Again, they have a deadline of September 1 and December 1, and there's a few more after that, but if we can't make the September 1 one, let's try and go for the December 1 one, you know? And basically, the rationale for this is, you know, committing to a total, total lake quality, because first, and right now, you know, the lake serves as a potential source of water for firefighters, and where they can't use hydrants now due to drought, so we can't even use the south end of the lake at all to pump. We used, years before, we used to always practice on Sunday mornings there, you can't even, you can't just, it's impossible. There's over a bunch of lily pads, it's just, it's impossible, it gets caught in the strainer, so it's, you know, and you've got the whole condo area up there, and it's a good area on the south end to, you know, be able to have a relay of the engines to be able to go to a fire, fill up a tank, and move on. And then the other thing is that thick weeds and dense lily pads on the south end of the lake have really created, it's worse than ever, contributed to water stagnation, and now there's a host of mosquito diseases going on, and the hot summer weather causes, you know, the, this, the matter to decompose, and we get this obnoxious methane gas being given off, and it smells like a sewer. And it's, it's just for those who live there, or those who pass by there, or, you know, you can't vote down there at all. And thirdly, you know, the Guilford High School, they have their crew team, they can't even use the south third of the lake, the southern third end of the lake, or Choate School either. And then, of course, the property values and taxes on the lake are higher than properties on, that are off the lake, so, you know, all these things come into factors of getting this lake in shape and keeping it in shape. And the fifth of all, water sports, from canoeing to boating to kayaking, and we've had a lot of paddle boarding, there's more kayaking on that lake than I've ever seen in years, and there's more people using the sandbar area, like, for hours and hours and hours, they'll be out there with their boats, tie up their boats, and it's really nice. And then, just as a matter of some information, Lake Quantapug hosts 20 species of fish and 30 different reptiles, and amphibians, and mammals, and 96 unique bird species, so, four of which are endangered. So, basically, I'm representing the Friends of Quantapug as president, we would like to take part in pursuing that long-term plan for the south, one-third of the lake, that the town spent $72,000 for, for the dredge, to do with dredging, and southern, of the seven, of the southern portion feasibility study done by Don Ballou when you were Selectmen there back in March of 2009. It's kind of been shelved and put on the backside. We, it was supposed to be addressed the last time we met, I don't know if anything's gone ahead with it or not, but it's, it involves, you know, the roadway, the culverts, the water during flooding is going around the culverts, and they're starting to cause problems, and the dam has to be addressed, because that's starting to fall apart. And we have heavy rains, that's another whole area. I know the Hazardous Mitigation Committee, you know, has proposed, you know, raising Chaffinch Island, and now their Long Hill Road, and all these other places, but that whole south end of the lake, those roads are completely impassable when we have heavy flooding. So, in conclusion, it comes down to, you know, quality of life for all of us, not just those that live on the lake, but for Guilford residents who use it, and also people who just come in with their boats from all over the state, since it is a trophy lake. And we just would like to follow through on this and go through with some of these recommendations.
I would just like to speak briefly, Pat Taylor from Quantapug Lane. Reiterate what Joan said, and thank everyone for pursuing that. It's really made a big difference this year in the water quality. Rick Maynard worked really, really hard on this and kept us informed, and so that's been a real nice relationship, I think, and I want to thank everyone that was involved in that, really. The second thing is, I just wanted to let you folks know that as a group, we got together, and we're going to do our own cleanup. We're trying to get about, you know, 25 to 50 people next Sunday. A lot of the herbicide has killed the weeds, and they're floating around the lake and hanging out in certain people's, so we're going to go and clean that up, and clean it up around the sandbar, we've organized that ourselves, and we've got a little boat brigade and buckets, and we're going to kind of hand-pull them, and, so we have that going on next Sunday, so we're, we're also taking some things upon ourselves to try to do our part for sure. And the second thing that I wanted to just ask, if, we weren't sure if there was money left over from this, from this year, allocations, and if there was, is it possible to entertain a second treatment of the herbicide in the fall, and in conjunction with Greg Bugley? So I don't know, I mean, that was kind of a question that people threw out in our little meeting, and so I thought I would bring it, we'd bring it to you guys. If there is money left over from this year, could a second treatment be applied? So, I know you can't answer that properly right now, but...
I have to, I have to look into it.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
And we have until July 1, and to still be able, under that same permit, to do another treatment.
Thank you.
And I'm Karen Strawson from Lake Drive, and I'm here again to thank everybody for their support, their ongoing support of the lake. I'm also here because I think the idea of a roadmap is excellent. I think that, of course, we need your leadership to get that started. We're willing to assist in any way we can, but I think that's the way of, to manage everybody's expectations going forward, because this is going to be an ongoing expense. I think it's good for all stakeholders to have something drawn out so that we have a sense of when we have to apply for something. Residents have, and, and friends of, in general, of the lake have an idea of when these processes take place, the herbicidal treatments, whatever. And we're looking at this over a long period of time, obviously, because right now, we're looking at the 2017 process, and if we, if we look at all the data we have available, which is, there's a tremendous amount, and the local expertise we have, whether it's through Jim Portley or Joan, we have a lot of knowledge that we can draw on to determine if and when we need to do something extensive at the lower end of the lake, and that will cost money, and that means we're looking at potentially floating a bond issue, which would be probably at some point next year now, which gets us into 2019, into 2020, when the actual work is done. So if we, if we take that first step now with your leadership, then we can, we can manage the questions, we can manage the processes, and I think we'll all be a heck of a lot happier, and we'll all have a document in front of us that, that makes it a fairly straightforward process, that this is what we're committed to doing. And it's a living document. I mean, obviously, we have, have, be able to draw on the expertise of the people who have been so gracious with their time thus far when it comes to new herbicides or whatever, but at least we'll all be on the same page in how we want to pursue this process, so...
Great.
Anyway, thank you all.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank the Friends of Lake Quantapug for recognizing the town's efforts, and I'm delighted to hear that it's, it's worked so well up to now.
It's amazing. It's amazing, within two days to three days, the boaters were just telling me, you know, what a improvement, that they could get out, they could, there weren't weeds when they were bringing their boats out on the, on the north end, and it's a lot cleaner up there now, and it's, it's just amazing. There's one whole cove area that, we're going to hit that, we want, what we want to do is rake and clean all around the sandbar, and, you know, we're going to have basically a bucket brigade, I got like 30 buckets with holes in them, fill them, I'm going to have them brought in, I'm going to dump them, and they'll bring in a bucket full, I'll give them an empty one. Basically, that's what we're going to do, and then in that cove area, I mean, we've just got to get them out of there.
And I think, congratulations goes to the Park and Rec Department, particularly Maynard, and I think Kevin McGee also for helping to write the grant. And like we said about a year ago, that we will continue to put a line item, you're correct, Joan.
Yes.
In Park and Rec's budget from here on in, to maintain that, that lake.
Yeah. We want to keep it going in the right direction.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't pay to do it one year and then forget about it, that's ridiculous, and it's a waste of money to just do it for one year. Rick, Jack, do you want to add anything to this, to what these ladies have said?
Well, Adam, glad you mentioned this. Kevin did a majority, Kevin and Greg Bugley did a majority of the work on the park. And I haven't been out there, I'm going to be there Wednesday, we're taking the rest of those bantik barriers back in that we had taken off the beach, we're removing them from the south end of the beach on Wednesday, and Greg's going to be there, so I plan on going around the lake with him to get a good look at it. I haven't had a chance to get up there, so we'll see that Wednesday. But, yeah, it's, I've heard the same things you ladies have said, that people are very pleased with the effectiveness of the research, and I know the bantik blankets in the beach area were very, very effective. We took those out, it was much, much better.
Now, as far as the dredging goes, before we put a question out to referendum, we have to still do some negotiating with DEEP. There's no sense putting that on the ballot if DEEP is not going to let us do it.
Yep.
Okay? And we're still trying to get some discussion going with DEEP. So until that happens.
Yep.
We can't do anything in that regard.
Well, we were hoping that it could be kind of a road infrastructure federal grant, you know, too, because you are, you're going to be rearranging that whole roadway on the south end.
Oh, yeah. No, I mean, I agree with you.
Yeah.
And I'm still of the opinion that...
I think that's the only way to approach it.
It should be dredged, and Jim Portley has said for years that that dam has to be rebuilt, and the road should be raised, and those culverts should be made larger, but the problem is DEEP will not let us touch the lake, you know that. Until we can get them to agree to let us dredge that, that lake and, and raise and lower the levels of water in the lake, we can't do anything, so...
That would make a big difference.
Carl, you want to say something?
Have our, has our state rep and our state senator been involved?
Oh, yeah, they've been involved with this from the beginning, yeah.
But I think that's where a roadmap or some sort of overall plan is going to be immensely helpful, because we come, we seem to be asking the same questions, and, and it's not that we're expecting you to do a roadmap, I mean, a number of us have been, we've spent our careers doing things like this, so, I mean, I, I'm very happy to do a lot of the lake work, and I'm sure the other people who are involved in, in the Friends are, so that it, I mean, it may involve lobbying, and again, we're not looking at this in a short period of time, we're looking at this over time.
No, it's, it's, it's a low-term project, I agree with you.
So, you know, if it involves just kind of documenting that this is how we go about the process of lobbying to get this done, or what the alternatives are, and it's all laid out, then it's going to be a heck of a lot easier to, I think, to move this forward. And I think that would be helpful for you as well, because it keeps a lot of the Friends and the users of the lake happy.
I agree.
And we're, we're happy right now, but over time, I think we can, we can help, we can do, we can, we can help this process.
And I think that's maybe where the subcommittee question came, evolved, too, if that, if that would be more helpful, so that's an actual committee.
We'll, we'll look into that.
Okay, great.
That might be a charter question, that I can answer.
Yep.
Okay?
Awesome.
Anybody else? Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Make this part of the record, Joan. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Rick could work on that, Rick could work. Item five, Finance Office, Linda Slavitsky, five dot one, receive the report from the Good morning, Linda.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
Good. Why don't you come closer? We don't bite.
I've never been accused of not being able to be heard. I've been, I think this is the start of my fifth week, and I, just so you all know for context, I'm not here every day, so we've been focusing on closing the year down. There was a bond issue, as you are aware, it's, the information's towards the back of the pack, and we are trying to get all the grant reports and requirements done for the state of Connecticut, because we've come to the end of a quarter. So we have some very preliminary numbers, which I believe they should have, right?
Yep, they have that back at me.
Okay. So basically, for last year, on the expenditure side, we are looking at total expenditures to date of roughly $89 million against a $90.7 million budget. There are still some year-end entries that have yet to be made, there are a few encumbrances that we have to deal with, and the payroll accruals have not been posted to the accounts. The other, I would say, good news is, is that on the revenue side, the town exceeded estimated revenues by $730,000, which considering the state was making cuts in the middle of the year more than one time is pretty good. Plus, the tax collector has really done a great job, she's $436,000 over, which is, again, very good. So we are working, what did I, nothing, the warrants, or they don't got the warrants?
No, they do, unless they have questions for it.
Okay. So that's pretty much it. Our, our goal is to try to close the year down within the next week and a half. We've been in communication with the Board of Ed on this as well. As I said, we're waiting for, we have a punch list of year-end things that we have to do, and once we do that, we can, we can close the year, which, you have to go through this process in the software system, and that sort of kicks off, we've been post, we've been making payments and recording revenues in the new year, but we need to close the old year in order to really get the system going. So are there any questions?
Questions on revenue or expense?
No, I don't have any questions on that, but everything is working smoothly in the Finance Department, and we appreciate your efforts.
Of course. Thank you. Thank you. You're very nice people that work here, very, not just in finance, but in all the departments.
Transition and change is always special, so.
In spite of working with the first select.
I didn't say it. Great, appreciate, appreciate your efforts.
Well, thank you very much. We're good? Nope, we're not good.
No, on insurance, I think you might have a question. I know.
Yeah, just a couple of questions. Previous reports sort of had given us a total fund balance.
You're talking the medical report?
On the medical benefits, which I, which I don't see here.
We're not there yet, we're waiting for the final settlement for Anthem, we don't have it yet.
And the premium for the ISL?
We have had no losses at this point, any...
Is the premium the same as last year?
I can't answer that, I'll have to get that answer for you.
Do you know if it's the same level as last year and the same premium?
I believe it's the same, yeah, I believe, I think it's $850,000, if I'm not mistaken.
So what are you doing with your time if you don't have the answer?
Oh, yeah.
I understand, some of this is...
Yeah, no, we, we did get the, we did get the July report, and we were able to confirm, as we would have expected, that there were no catastrophic claims during the month, but I have to wait until I get some stuff, more stuff from Anthem.
I grant you some time to catch up.
Thank you.
The other issue is that the Selectmen's meeting and the Board of Finance meeting falls a little bit earlier in the month than...
Yes.
Being the third Monday.
Yeah.
It's a little bit earlier than it usually falls.
That's correct.
So that's why we don't have all the information that we usually, and as we have done in the past, you don't have a July report yet.
Correct.
It goes still closing out June.
We're paying bills that are important that we have to pay in July, but we really are focusing on June right now.
And the orders to do back here?
We're still communicating with them on the next set of the schedule, but they're going, they will be at the Board of Ed in September, and we expect them to be here sometime in late September.
Okay. I think it might be a good time to bring up the fact that, since we didn't get much publicity on it, that the Town of Guilford sold $15.6 million worth of long-term bonds, and we sold them at a rate of 2.22%, which is a very nice rate for us, it's a low rate. And that was all for the high school. Each time we sold bonds for the high school, the rates have gone down. First set of bonds were sold at 2.296, and that was in '14. Next one was sold at 2.79, and that was in '15. And then in '16, which we just sold last month, was at 2.22%, so we continue to sell these bonds at decreasing interest rates. We also sold $14 million of short-term notes at, which is a one-year financing at .68%. The other good news is that Standard and Poor's reaffirmed our AAA rating, which is their highest rating, and I provided a gentleman with your credit rating report, and also Moody's reaffirmed our AA2 rating, like they gave us in, in March, so we're in pretty good shape credit-wise.
Yep.
And with our bond sales and short-term notes, so I wanted to bring that out. Unfortunately, we, well, unfortunately, we sent out a press release, when was it? August 3 is when we sold the notes, we closed on them last week, which was the 10th, and the papers picked it up, so. Yeah. So, I'll mention it now. Good news is hard to get publicity on, so there you go.
That's all.
All right.
Joe, what was funded under the notes?
The notes, $7 million was the high school, okay? So we pretty much have taken care of the high school now, except we'll have to take that $7 million and next year turn it into bonds. We might not need all of that $7 million, and then we'll be done.
I think you have some progress payments that still have to be made from the state.
Pardon me?
There's some progress payments.
Yeah.
That I think, I know we're waiting for one, maybe more.
And then we get a final report from the Building Committee, we probably won't need all that $7 million, and the rest...
You're still optimistic, the Building Committee?
Very optimistic, yeah. And the rest was other, other projects.
Yeah, it wasn't funded long-term because of uncertainties in the final number?
No, it wasn't funded long-term because that would bring our, our debt service up a little bit too high.
Okay.
And would impact the budget.
It's delaying the debt service.
Yes, all right.
You're trying to level it off.
Yeah, yeah, we didn't want the spike in debt service that we had this past year.
We're learning.
Unfortunately, rates are at an all-time low.
Yeah, well, you know, that's, that's, that's the argument. It's great if we didn't have to go to a budget and get a budget passed, but we didn't. Anything else? Linda, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, item six, or Fire Chief, Charles Hershey, six dot one, consider to take possible action to purchase hose from Shipments Fire Equipment and waive the bidding due to its being sold source. Morning, Chief.
Good morning.
How you doing?
I did receive, I did receive three quotes, which I believe the Board has. Shipments Fire Equipment is the only one that entirely meet our specifications. We've used this type of hose for the last, oh, 20 years, so I recommend, I'd like to get, purchase it from Shipments for $18,210. $15,000 come out of capital, and the $2,000 come out of operating budget. They're real short hose.
What, what's the difference between the Firematic material and shipments?
The way it's constructed, the amount of warranties.
Okay, because that's not clear for the bid.
Right, right. It's not a bid, it's a quote.
Well, it's a quote, okay.
Right, I get the specification sheets.
So, did you put out specimens, specification sheets?
Yes.
And they just didn't comply?
Right.
Why bother to answer if you don't comply with the specs?
Everybody builds their hose differently.
I'll move. Most of them made in second. Is there any discussion? I want the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
And this is on the 2017 budget thing.
Right.
Item seven, Park and Recreation Director Rick Mated, discuss and take possible action to contract with Will Thompson to provide architectural services for Jakers Beach Boardwalk. Morning, Rick.
Good morning. Jeff Penders and Sue Roberts are both here, also from the Parks and Recreation Commission. So just to give you a brief outline of where we are, this is phase three of the Jakers Beach project. Phase one was the reconstruction of the parking lot, you know, the landscaping and some repairs to the bathhouse, the showers and the water fountains. Phase two was the boardwalk that we put in connecting the playground to the boardwalk, to the bathhouse. And then this next phase is, was always in the plan, we just never had done it yet, and that was a platform that would be extending the boardwalk east a little bit closer to the playground, actually connecting it with the stone dust pathway that goes around the playground. It's right about in front of where the shower and water fountain are, and that end of the park there. And it would be a decking that eventually we'd put a, rent a tent to have over for more shade. We do rent a tent every year now anyway, and it's kind of by the picnic pavilion, we would just move that out and be over this decking, so it provides more shade for people that have come down to the beach there. And I have to say, the improvements that Will Thompson and John Cunningham designed and the Parks and Rec, and you all approved over the last couple of years, that the numbers of people using the beach now is just greatly, greatly increased. Plus the beach cleaning machine that we bought, that makes a big difference on the quality of the sand there. But on a typical Saturday or Sunday, four or five years ago, we were getting, at any given time, maybe twenty or thirty people on the beach. There were a lot more on what I call the green area, the grass and picnic pavilion and playground. A lot more people were there. Now, on an average Saturday or Sunday, we're having eighty to a hundred people at any given time on the beach. So it's gone up tremendously. People just love coming down there. If you go down on the evening, you see people sitting on the benches, you know, or the Adronic chairs, and they were all donated by people. And it's just, the improvements are just fantastic, you know. So this just continues it. I think the last thing. I don't think there's anything beyond this, but it would just create that decking that would be another area where people could sit, and we'll put that tent over there and provide shade for them.
I agree that it really has improved tremendously. I mean, you just get the feedback. On a completely different subject, would it ever be feasible to truck in some beach sand? I mean, 'cause the sand, I know we're cleaning it, and it's big improvement, but, you know, it's on the verge of being dirt, the sand. That's that kind of sand. Is it feasible permit-wise and, you know, cost-wise in the winter, just to get some beach sand from someplace?
I think we could look into that, Charlie. I mean, you know, some towns do it. I think the concern, though, is if, if we could do the up beach, obviously, we can't do below the high tide, 'cause it's all gonna wash out anyway. Something that suggests that.
Well, that was gonna be my next question. At high tide, everybody raves about it, but it's difficult to go swimming at low tide.
It is.
But anywhere, I suppose, just because of the nature of the muck.
It's very shallow. You have to walk out probably fifty yards or more. You're still waist-deep in water, and it's pretty mucky in there.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's not, it's not a swimming beach during low tide. High tide, it's fine, but low tide, you can't. You know, again, you have to go way out before you.
I just, yeah, I mean, you go to other beaches, the beach sand, and I know that is a man-made beach, so to speak. And, you know, long-term, I've always wondered about just bringing in some, you know, put in a budget over a period of years and bring in some, yeah, some beach sand. I don't know, like you said, other towns do it. I thought, I'm throwing out this suggestion.
Yeah, maybe it's a phase four. Another thing we can look at. But I kid Scott Ersting, my counterpart in Madison, you know, the surf club, the sand is kind of nice over there. I kid him, every time I go there, I fill my shoes up, and I bring up the chicks beach and that. In a million years, we'll have a better sand.
Well, you were doing a bucket brigade at Quantipaw lately.
Actually, Gateway in New Haven brings sand in from Cape Cod.
Yeah.
And.
Nice sand.
The owner of Gateway is a Guilford resident.
Right.
I just, you know, I just think it'd be interesting, just, you know, even bring, you know what I'm saying.
We do add sand periodically, about every five years at Quantipaw, and we get it from Gateway Turmoil. It's the same stuff. It's good sand. So, yeah, we could, I mean, certainly, it's something we can look into.
How was your attendance this weekend there?
You know, I didn't get down there, but, you know, I don't know, maybe because the sand was so hot, I'm not sure if people would walk on it.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I'll find out today.
Could you tell the shade?
Yeah, yeah. So what we'd like to do with Will Thompson, we'd like to have him continue with phase three. His proposal, I think you may have, you know, is for construction documents, and then helping us with the construction procurement and the bids, and actually overseeing the construction of the boardwalk there. I imagine he'll design it the same way as the one that's there now. The structure that holds the boardwalk in place are called diamond piers. There aren't many of them around this part of the New England anyway, I don't think. And they're supposedly very, you know, we are told, we don't want to test it, that they won't go in a flood. They'll be there. And they're very, very sturdy. And so I'm assuming he would design the same, the same way. And so we would like to suggest the Board of Selectmen approve of Will Thompson to continue with this. The amount that he has proposed is ten-thousand-eight-hundred dollars. That includes a couple of surveys that have to still be done. He has to still have a environmental survey, because the permit that we had has expired, because that was two, two or three years ago when that part was done. So that's got to be done again, a permit through DEP. He would do all that, and then get the permits in place and do the design and work with us to, with the construction.
I just wanted to.
Pam, you had a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out to the board that, you know, the town did previously go out to bid for on-call architect services, so that, and we awarded four companies. And really, the purpose of that was so you, you know, a department could use one of those on-call architects in lieu of going out to bid for small projects. So when you make your decision, you have to understand that Will Thompson was not one of the four awarded under the on-call, and so you're just factoring that in as you make your decision.
Did he bid?
Yeah, I, no, he did not bid on that.
But he did the rest of the.
He did the other, the rest of the day.
And my, and my sense of that process was that we were, we were thinking in terms of building construction as opposed, I mean, this is kind of a unique situation. Most of, most of these people would not have been on walkways.
Date of that process was, it was awarded in January 2016.
Oh, so this is, you know, his, Thompson's start of the beach was prior to all of that, and this is ongoing. Okay. Just because he didn't participate in that doesn't preclude him from that. Okay, I'll move. We authorize Park and Rec to have Will Thompson move forward with the boardwalk permitting, design, et cetera, for ten thousand, is it ten thousand-eight-hundred dollars?
Do you have, do you have any sense of, based on prior contracts and the square footage that's involved, just approximately what this would cost?
The early estimate, when we first talked about this about a year or so, was around, probably around eighty-five thousand, roughly.
Including architectural or addition to the?
In addition, yeah.
So the construction would be eighty-eight-five thousand?
Roughly, yeah. Yeah, we think. Of course, you know, we don't know when we go out, until we go out to bid, but we think it's gonna be around there.
Understood.
And that would all be under the reversible account.
Charles, I'm gonna add to your motion that the funds are gonna be appropriated from Park and Rec's reversible account.
Except that.
Okay. You take that? Yes. Okay. Motion is made in second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Folks from Park and Rec. Item eight, Town Engineer, he called after the, the agenda was published and wished to withdraw that item for now. So we'll just withdraw that table.
So.
The table, we have to just withdraw that.
Okay.
All right. Item nine, appointments and reservations. Excuse me. Remove from the table and take possible action on a request from Cliff Bavaria Jr. to be reappointed to the Marina Commission, return to expire November 30th, 2019, or act on a recommendation to appoint Al DiMarzio to the Marina Commission, return to expire November 30th, 2019. Have we heard from the Democratic Town Committee on this?
Yes.
Okay. It's in the packet. And I think their choice is for Al DiMarzio. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. Somebody want to make a motion now?
I would move that we appoint Al DiMarzio to the Marina Commission and thank Mr. McGuire for his service over the years, but, you know, the DTC went through this process fairly extensively, as described in the memo, so.
Okay. Second. And there's a motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Thank you. Nine dot two, act on a reappointment of David Weinberg as Guilford's representative to the Cable Advisory Council of South Central Connecticut for a term to expire June 30th, 2018. So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Nine dot three, act on a recommendation to appoint David Egan and Susan Renna to the Tax Stabilization Committee. Do I have a motion, please?
Second.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you. Item ten, request for the use of town property. We have ten-one to ten-six.
I would move that we approve the seven requests for signs. Vista Life had multiple requests. So there's seven requests for signs as delineated in the agenda.
Second.
Motion is made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous. Thank you, Gary. Thank you. Eleven, correspondence. Gave you my correspondence earlier. That was from the rating agencies. Okay. I have nothing else. Committee reports, nothing. I was gonna ask Selectman Cartier how she's making out the efficiency, excuse me, following up on efficiency task force.
No activity in that at this moment?
I haven't heard anything more. Talked to Chairman of the.
Finance.
Finance Committee. I was getting to it. And he, he said he hasn't heard, hasn't had any conversation or communication with Cartier, so we'll move on. Old business, anybody? New business? No, that's for September. Okay. Yes, Gary?
I would, I would just like to thank the Shellfish Commission.
Go right ahead.
Which stepped in, as many people know, the, on 146 next to, where the water goes under the road to Lost Lake is a very popular crabbing area. There was a trash problem there. The state got involved, and the Shellfish Commission stepped in and agreed to provide a trash receptacle and paid to have Schweitzer dump the trash receptacle twice a month, twice a week, to keep that clean, so that the state removed its barriers to the parking lot and reopened that sort of area for convenient crabbing while the crabbing season lasts.
All right. Thank you.
Kudos to them for stepping up.
Excellent. Anybody else? Public forum, limited to three minutes on any item. Anybody wishing to address the board? Seeing none, I'll call for a motion to adjourn. So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I returned at nine fifteen a.m.
Better record?